Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, September 22, 2014 at 5:30 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. I'd like to call me to order and request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Folic?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Brethauer, or, I'm sorry, Boudreaux?
Thank you. Item three is public appearances. Item A, discussion with Ken Luckt, Wisconsin Southern Railroad, and possible action regarding license agreement for temporary use of facilities of the rail line as contract carrier. So, Ken, if you want to come to the microphone, please. Welcome. Just get you on TV and people can hear, so.
Great, absolutely.
I thought you liked that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Don't get nervous.
Okay.
So, Ken came here to talk about the agreement that was in the packet, and then we have one small change to the agreement. And Ken, did we able to get that amended or revised? And it comes to the attorney?
We're working on that right now.
You're working on it?
We'll have it tomorrow.
And we can explain that, so. So, Ken, you want to maybe explain what this agreement does, please?
Okay, great. Appreciate your time here tonight. I'm Ken Luckt, Government Relations Director for Wisconsin and Southern Railroad. As you know, back in May, the village board executed a temporary licensing agreement that would allow WSR on your property that you own between Pittsburgh and Oregon in order to rehabilitate the line to Class II standards. That work's been underway throughout the summer and into the fall of this year. We're about 75% complete. The line at this stage can be put into viable rail service. There's surely some other activities that we need to do, but we could do that under traffic, meaning we can repair bridges and culverts while train services is underway. August 22 of this year, WSR did file with the Surface Transportation Board, that is our federal regulatory body in Washington, for common carrier rights. At this time, Oregon does have the rights to service the industrial park and any other communities and businesses along the line. And basically, it's the village's intent to convey that to WSR. So, we're waiting for approval from the Surface Transportation Board for that. That should be coming within the next 30 days. August 28 of this year, the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission filed for approval of the transaction between the village and the Transit Commission. Unfortunately, that's going to take a while longer. That could take an upwards of 90 to 120 days, so that takes us out to November. So, if we do not have any other type of a temporary contract to operate, we cannot service the customers along this line. The customer has contacted us in the business park, and they would like rail service yet this season. Unfortunately, November does not work out in the timing for that business model, so they requested us do whatever we can to work with both the village and the city to execute a temporary operating agreement, a contract, which would name WSR as a contract carrier that would operate on your behalf to provide service to the industrial park. So, that's really what is before you here tonight. As you know, the customers invested millions of dollars in their plant, their facility, their track, and brown road, and just before the season gets done and before the freeze sets in, they would just like to see two or three trains that would give them the product that they need to carry them throughout the rest of the year. The agreement that's before you does obligate the railroad to retain insurance. We've talked with your legal counsel, as well as the administrator, on the coverages that we will be offering for this temporary period, and it seems like it's very acceptable to the village. And we've also addressed some other concerns and questions that village staff has had, including questions and concerns that the city of Pittsburgh has had. So, at this point, before you tonight, we have an agreement that does require a few more tweaks, but by tomorrow, we should have that final draft in the hands of your attorney and your administrator. So, I do appreciate your support for it tonight.
Did you want to comment, Matt?
Briefly, I've reviewed the agreement, had some discussions with the various parties that are interested in this, including not only Ken and his company, but Pittsburgh, Department of Transportation, Wisconsin River Trail, Wisconsin.
The commission.
The commission, thank you. River Rail Transit Commission. The agreement before you, I can recommend approval, subject to just a couple of things. One, adding the insurance coverage limits that will be provided, and Ken described those in a voicemail that I received this afternoon, and they seem adequate. $50 million under one policy relating to your standard rail liability insurance, and then 15 million limits, as I understand it, with respect to property damage?
Yep.
Yeah. And so, we're going to put those limits in. And then, the only other piece we need, the only other condition, so that would be one condition. The other condition is, we need confirmation in writing from the Department of Transportation and the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission that they consent to the village and the city entering into this agreement. And they have indicated that they're willing to do that. They'll provide something to us in writing confirming that. So, my recommended motion is to approve the agreement, subject to the insurance policy limits being inserted in a way that's acceptable to the administrator and the attorney, and to receiving confirmation from DOT and the commission that they consent to the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. So, that opens it for discussion, and questions for Mr. Luckt, please.
I don't have any other questions or comments on the agreement. I trust Matt's expertise on that. But after we act on this, I do have another question, not related to the railroad, but not to this agreement.
So, anything on the agreement? Any questions or comments? So, we have a motion second before us, as Mr. Gray explained, with the two contingencies on insurance and a letter from the DOT. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We got that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, Ken. Jerry has a question.
I do have another follow-up question. I've been asked by members of the public about some things about the railroad. I hope you can answer. And number one is, how far south is the line going to be actively running?
I think it's, I think it's okay. If I remember correctly, it's a road called Butts Corners Road, which is just north of Evansville.
Okay, so you'll be?
Right around there, approximately, approximately about three quarters of a mile, mile north of Evansville.
Okay, so it'll be, you'll be storing stuff down that far, or exactly what will be the use down as far as Butts Road?
Jerry, you got a, I'm sorry, there's a difference between the line being activated and the line being used. So, the entire line's going to be activated?
Okay.
They're only going to use the line from Netherwood, what we own right now at Pittsburgh, Netherwood, north to McCoy Road.
Okay, so there may be trains running all the way down to Janesville, or?
Not quite. There are no legal documents in place that would allow our company to run all the way to Janesville.
Okay.
The only legal documents that we're currently working on, which is the approval from Washington that we're waiting for, is for Wisconsin and Southern Railroad to operate from McCoy Road down to Butts Corners Road.
Okay.
Okay, and that's about 19 miles.
Right.
However, what Mike Grace is stating that is, the rehabilitation project that's currently underway will only take place between McCoy Road and Netherwood Road, because that's where the service is required.
Okay.
You'll see trains that will be going over Netherwood Road just because we need the room to shove cars into the customer. You may see an engine, a locomotive, going down to Oregon, or Brooklyn, down that far occasionally. We don't know just yet. But Brooklyn, there's a couple of state highway crossings that are not in place. So, in order for us to serve a semi-customer down to about a mile north of Evansville, we would first need a couple of state highway crossings in place. So, but operating authority we have, and we have the insurance obligations as well.
Okay. Once you get up and running, how much activity do you estimate that section of track will see?
So, the section of track between McCoy Road and Netherwood Road, at this point, it'll be strictly based on customer demand. At this point, it's expected to be about three days a week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sure the public appreciate the information.
But I think that once around Thanksgiving, when the business will tail off, the line probably will not be used during the winter. Is that correct?
The business right now that will be served by rail is seasonal business, so it's strictly tied to the construction season. So, between April, approximately April and October is when they'll be shipping. Once the freeze sets in, it's not very easy to get sand out of railroad cars when it's frozen. So, between November and March, typically, you won't see any rail traffic to Oregon servicing the business park unless there's another industry that is asking for service. So, right now, the demand is just seasonal.
Anything else from anyone? I think that's all, Ken. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Well, good item 3B, which is discussion with Jerry and Bonnie Thiel regarding additional cost for sidewalk work in front of Mason's on Main and possible action by the board. If you'd like to come up, please. And we have information in our packet about this.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to give us an explanation of what's happened here and the cost and so on, please.
Well, Xander came and gave the initial estimate of what they thought it would take to waterproof the buildings initially. And then, once we got the sidewalks opened up, we found that there was a six-foot-by-six-inch void in front of the buildings where water was rushing into the buildings. Also, there was a lot of debris, old sidewalk that was dumped in front of the buildings years ago. And when the new sidewalk was constructed and the road or the street in front was raised and new curb and sidewalk was put in, there wasn't the consideration taken for the pitch of the sidewalk in front of those buildings. We had water coming into the Masonic Temple, which, you know, there used to be a step going up into the temple, which was eliminated the last time around. And thus, when water was blowing towards the building, it entered the cracks next to the building and the voids next to the building that weren't filled in properly when the new sidewalk was constructed. The engineer had indicated that when we were opening up the sidewalks, that he was there every day, and that they did everything correctly. And then, I showed him the six-foot void, as well as the six-inch-wide void, and he couldn't understand why that happened. And he said, "I thought you were here every day." And he just turned around and walked away. So, they didn't do their due diligence. And I guess if I was the village, I'd take those bills and make copies of them and hand them over to the engineer to do their due diligence and pay the bills. We cost Bonnie and I, Masons, probably $15,000 to $18,000 in lost business, as well as repairs downstairs, et cetera, plus my time, which was worth something as well. So, the bills that you received are bills that I believe Xander is entitled to. They had to get a mini excavator in there to get all the trash, all the broken sidewalk, old sidewalk, boulders, old timbers that were all thrown in there. And they did a lot of work there. And since their work was completed and the village did their work with re-coreing the sidewalks, we have not had any water intrusion into the basements at all, so.
So, questions, discussions?
I guess I'd have a question for staff. Mark, what would you estimate the village cost in this repair has been thus far, in materials and labor?
Probably $3,000 to $4,000. Just guessing.
I guess I was under the impression that we had discussed this in, yeah, in this motion that was made in June. The motion is that the village would do certain things, and then this situation would be closed at that point. It was materials at 700, 800. Or could you explain that to me, Mark? What does this motion mean?
Well, I had done a real brief estimate of cost of materials, which was basically removal, basically putting the concrete back in.
Okay. Okay, so, anyway, the village has got about $3,000 to $4,000 in it. And I don't know what the rest of the board, but I thought that we had reached agreement on this back in June. Is that not what you understood, or?
I don't recall any agreement being reached, because we didn't know what we were dealing with at that time until things were opened up.
I do remember that this was kind of a hurried remedy, because?
We were losing business, and our buildings were taking a hit with all the water coming in. And it was a-
Well, the good news is it's solved now. I didn't realize this was still hanging open. I guess I'd like some more time to think about this.
So, other thoughts?
I guess I'd like to know from the contractor how he can give us a proposal for $950 for the work. And then, we get an invoice for $4,595. Did, Mark, did you know that there was going to be cost overrun?
Not at the time of this board meeting, no.
Okay. No, I mean, were you surprised to see this invoice, or?
I didn't realize that Xander did that much work, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of a question I had, too, as I looked at the materials. The bid was $950, and we kind of had figures. And I was kind of like Jerry. I thought we kind of brought this to closure based on what we talked about. And the last period of those minutes, it says I asked whether this doesn't work. And Jerry, you said Xander Solutions assured him the work done would fix the problem. That doesn't address overrunning costs. But, you know, I had the impression that Xander had looked at it and said this would take care of it, and when this is done at $950, it'll be done with. And then, you know, singing a bill for $4,595 was a bit of a surprise.
That was before they opened up the sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, life is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you got until you bite into it.
I don't think anybody could know until it was opened up.
Well, then, this proposal should have been written differently, in my opinion.
Well, you know, I guess the initial investigative proposal from, you know, the engineer was something like $2,000. And then, there was to look into the problem, which they couldn't have done without opening up the sidewalk. And the engineer, you know, point-blank told me, you know, he was there every day. And, you know, it's what it is. You know, he didn't do his job. I've been around the block a few times, and, you know, what happened there, I think, you know, should be looking for a different engineer to try to pull that on, you know, a village that spends as much money with the firm as the village does. Being very blunt.
This presents us with a very interesting dilemma, because that work was done in '06. And so, any warranty is long expired. And there was another owner prior to you that had to have a similar problem, right? And that other owner didn't say anything.
No, he jury-rigged.
Right. But again, you know, I mean, we're talking about remedying something that's been going on for, that went on until you brought it to everybody's attention. It was going on for eight years. And-
With the exception of 113, which the water started coming in.
So, really, the party that bears some liability here is the previous owner, the way I see it. Because they should have brought it to the attention of the village when the warranty was still in force for the work. So, I'm trying to, I don't, Matt, any thoughts?
Well, I'll tell you what occurs to me, and I'm not sure I'm fully understanding everything that happened here. But what, I was at the meeting when the board discussed this initially, and I reviewed the minutes. And it's clear to me that the board's understanding was that it was authorizing, Mark, to proceed with the work that the village was going to do with respect to the sidewalk, and was authorizing, essentially paying Xander to do the work that Xander was proposing to do, based on this $950 proposal. And that's my understanding of what the board was prepared to, and indicating a willingness to do. What's unclear to me is how things changed after that. And it looks like maybe what happened is that when the sidewalk was removed and Xander and others looked at what needed to be done, maybe the scope of the work changed, although you can't really tell from the invoice, because, I mean, there's actually more detail in the original $950 bid than I see in this invoice, which just refers to, you know, digging out two windle wells, which is discussed in the bid, and waterproofing front of building. I don't know if that was anticipated or not in the original estimate. But in any event, it would have been- it, it would have been better if there could have been another discussion with the board before the scope changed in a way that resulted in an additional, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars in cost. I don't know if that was feasible here or not. You know, the board, I think the board committed to the nine fifty. You're now being asked to pay four thousand five hundred and ninety-five. And presume, I'm, I'm just presuming something changed with the scope of the work. And I don't, my, as far as I know, that, that wasn't discussed with the board before tonight. So that's unfortunate. Maybe, maybe it wasn't feasible to have that discussion along the way. I, I don't know.
Well, you would have thought it would have been feasible for someone to contact Mark and said, "We've got a problem." I mean, he's been around the village almost every day when the work was being done, or Gary was around, or taking pictures.
Were you informed that the scope of the work that Xander's needed to do was going to be enlarged and modified and different?
I guess we didn't realize, I knew we brought in that mini excavator, but I didn't realize that the, we were from that amount to...
You know, when we started this, of course, you know, talking about if it's going to be feasible or not, I don't know that it would have been because that would have extended the time to come through and present this once again. And I know that Mark was gone for a period of time during this whole process. And Gary was on site and did know that this was happening. Whether that constitutes an okay to have it done or not, I guess is, and I don't, I'm assuming that it would have been okay, I guess. You know, what, what are you going to do when the whole thing's torn up and the sidewalk has to be addressed appropriately? You know, I, I suppose if Xander has to come in here and go through everything they did, they, they'll do that, I'm sure, if you need more detail.
However, when the sidewalk was opened, you're sitting there with a six-foot hole that's six inches wide that, you know, could fill up with rain. And, you know, and then on the other side, on the south side of one thirteen, you know, we, you know, said, we were speculating whether or not, you know, there was a six-foot hole there. And we took a shovel and the shovel went all the way in, and there was. And the only way to properly take care of it was to dig all that debris out of there, which should have been done in the first place. And, and again, you know, if the sidewalk would have been poured with the step remaining, we probably wouldn't be here right now and discussing it because we, there wasn't the issue prior to the sidewalk being raised. So, you know, whose fault is that? I don't know. It's, everybody's, has good intentions. We, you know, sucked up about fifteen to eighteen grand in lost business and, you know, replacing the floors and drywalling and everything else, so.
Have one more comment?
Yeah.
Kind of comment question. I don't know whether there, there's any expectation here that, well, I don't know whether you have any other losses that you're anticipating may need to be addressed. You've mentioned fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars in losses that you have incurred, which I assume are above and beyond the, say, the cost of the Xander's work.
Yes.
Okay. And so one of the questions I have is whether the village would, would want and expect to have any other claims released or addressed, bringing this matter to a final conclusion or, and I don't know whether from your perspective, you still have issues that you think need to be addressed. I know, I don't know, but ordinarily, one would ask that question as part of a, coming to the end of a project like this, are we done or are we not done? And one way to know that you're done is to get a release for many further claims that might relate to the sidewalk, the water damage, what have you.
My next que, I got one last question. On the bid, it said to dig out two window wells as discussed and exposed block in area. You said when they removed the, the concrete sidewalk, there was a six-inch by six-foot hole. How big was Xander going to dig out those window wells so they could get in there to work? I'm assuming it would be bigger than six inches by six feet. Approximately, correct?
No, they were going to dig right around the...
How big of an area up from the building?
I don't know.
More than six inches? Less than six inches? I mean, they're going to have to get their styrofoam down in there to work. So they're going to have to dig some kind of a hole there to actually get in there to actually do the work, correct? Maybe, I don't know.
The way the sidewalk was poured initially was...
Well, I don't care how the sidewalk was originally poured. I'm saying the contract says to dig out two window wells. Are they going to dig out a one-inch gap in front of those window wells all the way to the bottom of the window well so they could pour, slide in a piece of concrete or styrofoam? Or were they going to dig it out two feet so a body could actually get in there to work? I guess we don't know that answer. So if there's a six-inch hole in front of that window well...
When the village opened up the sidewalk, it was very evident that a human body could be buried in there six feet down.
But it was only six inches open, so a person couldn't stand in there to work. So they would have had to made it bigger for a person to actually get in there to do the work they were going to do to waterproof the area, correct?
I think you'd have to clarify all your very details with Xander, so...
Correct. So...
I don't think they were anticipating crawling into a cavity to work while their work would have been done, you know, from the top of the sidewalk.
Right, but they would have to dig out something to get all the way down to the bottom of this window well so they could waterproof it. And that was how far below the ground?
I don't think they knew that at the time.
Well, they could do in the basement, you could see the window wells from what I understood from the conversation we had before this. So they knew they had to get down there two feet, three feet, but they knew they were going to have to make more than a one-inch gap in front of that window well.
I think...
So a six-inch gap, to me, doesn't sound like it's that big of a deal, especially if they knew they were going to have to dig out more.
Well, I don't think they anticipated, seeing what they did once the village removed the sidewalk. And there is a, from the top of the sidewalk to the top of the window well, there's about three feet. And I think perhaps their thought is that you remove at least a couple feet of sidewalk and then you're, they could waterproof on top from the top of the sidewalk down to the bottom or to the top of the window well. I think that's probably what their thought was. But when they opened it up, when the village opened it up, it was a whole different ball of...
And it involved both buildings going out a span further than what they first anticipated area was.
Okay, so as I look at some of the minutes, in one of the paragraphs, there's some discussion about what happened, what caused the problem, so on. And it says that, Dregney said the problem is nobody knows, there will not be conclusive evidence, all we can do is speculate. And the discussion we just had here is kind of the same thing, and it sounds like, I'm feeling more we need to hear from Xander on exactly how they did the work, why they had to, stuff like that. That's kind of what you were asking earlier, right, Jerry?
Well, yeah, but if I kind of scoot to the, the, really what we're discussing here is who's going to bear the cost, you know? And, you know, you fine folks, we enjoy, I enjoy your restaurant, and I certainly don't want to offend you, but there's some, it's just a little bit irregular. And I guess in retrospect, if I had to do this over again, I would have just said, "Slow down. Let's do, have Matt put together a formal agreement indicating who pays for what." And then the village hired village contractors so that the village would have control and therefore responsibility over the project. Right now, we're being asked to pay a bill that was submitted to Jerry in July, and we're now at the end of September. And, and again, this is for a defect. I don't, I don't argue that fact. It's definitely a defect that someone has liability for. But again, unfortunately, I don't see where it's your liability and I don't see where it's the village's liability either. So if you have a solution for this, I'd sure appreciate it. I think the board would appreciate it. Because again, we don't want to offend you, but it's just kind of hard to justify using taxpayers' money to pay for something that the village may not have allowed money for. Now, Matt, do you feel there's any liability on the village part here, just from what you've heard? I, I don't want to venture a guess on that. I mean, the situation is too complicated. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we, we, I, this is hard because I've been feeling really good every time I went in or walked by your restaurant.
You're not going to offend us, so, you know, business is business.
But I just want to be very careful, you know, here because I, you know, value...
You're representing the taxpayers, which I am one of, okay? And the village hired a engineering firm to do a job which they entrusted their opinion. They hired a contractor to do a job. They took liberties in a historic area, which they probably should have slowed down and, you know, thought about where they were, you know, taking concrete out and where they were putting debris and so forth.
Right.
So where does the liability belong? You know, does it belong on us? I don't think so.
No.
Does it belong on the engineer who said, "I was here every day and we did everything right." And I said, "Come here, you know, what's this big hole here?" Yeah, well, then he turns around and walks away. Like I said in my opening statement, you know, if anybody should get the bill, it should be them. And if they don't want to stand up, then...
Do they have any liability here?
Again, this is a really complicated situation. I don't want to take a guess at that. I, I haven't analyzed it carefully enough. Fortunately, I think we may be dealing with a problem that now has a magnitude of about three thousand five hundred dollars. If that's all you're asking for and you're not anticipating any further...
You know, we're reasonable people, you know? We've took a hit. We're okay with that. But when something is done that is out of our control and things are done that, you know, people took stupid pills and did things, then let that responsibility, you know, fall on them. And I think it, you know, judging from some of the other work I've seen in the village that was done, I think the village needs to, you know, maybe, you know, analyze who they're doing business with also. And that's my personal opinion as a business person.
Let me just ask this pointed question. If the village agrees to pay the bill, would you be willing to release any, the village from any other claim that you may have relating to the sidewalk, damage to the building connected to this issue?
We have no other claims.
Have no other claims?
No.
So you would be willing to approve a release to that effect?
Correct.
After revealing it, yeah.
Understood, understood. So I think your choices are you pay nine fifty and say that's what you agreed to do.
Well, excuse me, Matt, but we've already paid...
Did you already pay the nine fifty?
Paid three thousand dollars.
I don't think you paid anything.
No, but what the board said back in June, you'd be willing to do. I don't know where the three to four thousand dollars is. I thought, Mark, the work we did was done in half.
It was.
That's labor, labor costs.
Labor costs, yeah.
That's our own internal labor cost.
Yes.
So that's our internal cost of bringing our people there to do what we get. So the board agreed back in June to contribute nine fifty to the Xander cost, as I understood the board's decision.
Yep.
You could do that. You could say, "We understand things change, the scope increased, you know, it's more, you'll agree to pay the higher amount." That's internally up to you. I would encourage you to ask for a release in either case.
Well, we haven't even talked about the second invoice yet for the eleven hundred dollars.
Oh, what's that?
Yeah, it's the, for the threshold.
Are you asking for it?
Oh, was that a part of the discussion back in June? Over covered.
That was, I, I remember that.
The threshold talk?
I don't remember what the, what the original estimate came through for that.
This is eleven hundred for, let's see, because the motion was to approve restoration of the sidewalk in front of Mason's on Main, including the nine fifty to Xander proposal for waterproofing, and authorize Belo and Thiel to work together to finish the sidewalk and approach to the building, including a handicap ramp, the threshold, and welder to reweld the metal. So, Mark, is it, was it your understanding that that threshold work was, that was, that was anticipated as part of this when we were discussing it in June?
Yeah, my understanding when we walked away from the meeting was that the village had removed the sidewalk and poured back. Thiel's would have the work done to one thirteen, one seventeen, South Main Street.
Okay.
And then we poured the sidewalk back.
Okay, and they'd have the Xander work done and the threshold?
Was he part of Xander's?
Well, the threshold, no, he's, it's not part of Xander. And it's my understanding that the threshold was kind of ambiguous up in the air because we had to see, once it was dug out, if the, the defect in it, or if you want to call it a defect, had anything to do with the original pouring of the sidewalk. And that couldn't be determined until it was opened up as the rest of it.
And once it was opened up, there was a three-inch by one-half inch rod that was holding two plates together that was bent up about twenty degrees, which only could have happened if a skid loader or some other big piece of equipment bent it. And the way it was bent, it was bent towards the door of the Masonic Temple, which means that when they took their readings for raising the street in the front, then they took their calculations for the curb and gutter. And when they started pouring the sidewalk, they said, "Oh, the front of the plate isn't going to match the sidewalk and we're not going to have any drainage." So, and this is my speculation of how it went down, is that a skid loader was brought in and the plate was brought up to match the sidewalk. And thus, water going into the front door of Mason's on Main. Those buildings are a hundred and twenty years old. They would not have, you know, lasted this long if the people who built those buildings put that plate that way because that plate would have drained right along a six-hundred-year-old timber that runs the length of that building. And that would have rotted out years ago.
So one, one, another option we haven't discussed is submitting a claim to your insurance provider and, and asking the insurance company to evaluate it and to consider paying these bills. The insurance company's going to look at it, you know, some people have asked the question of who's, who's, who's responsible for this? That's how they'll look at it, says that, does the village have responsibility to this? And I don't know how they're going to address it. They may say yes, they may say no. And if they say no, that doesn't mean you're done because I expect the Thieves will still ask you to pay for it. But maybe it's worth asking the insurance company if they'll pay it. Now talking about forty-five hundred dollars, forty-six hundred dollars?
Is that the, is that the random amount, forty-five hundred?
No, well, it's a Xander invoice plus the eleven hundred.
Yeah, I think it's forty-eight oh five fifty.
Do you know what you're in? Well, we should check and see what your deductible is. I mean, it doesn't make sense to ask if, if it's smaller than your deductible.
It's, it's not like it is. I, I don't, I don't know if I might have it is. Yeah, I'm not sure.
So that's another option, is you can at least check out the insurance issue coverage, see if it's a, see if it's an amount that exceeds your deductible. And if it is, submit the documentation to the insurance company, ask them to evaluate it, make a judgment about payment, and come back and examine what they've said when they, when that process is completed. It's another option.
Or the other option besides that is to give your engineer a bill also. And also the contractor, who was that, Matt, at that time?
Who did the contract?
That's Prezy Construction.
What? Yeah, that's right.
I think Matt was in there too, from my recollection.
He did this one over here in the parking lot. I don't know if that opened up.
Yeah, Prezy did the downtown, I remember the name now.
You mean, you mean asking either the engineer or the contractor both to pay this, to assert that they are responsible? Could do that? Could ask him?
Seems like asking the contractor, the engineer, and the insurance company where they stand on this would be worth doing.
Well, we've already asked the engineer, right? The engineer was there, the engineer said that in the engineer's view, the engineer did everything correctly. That's their view.
That was before it was opened up though.
And he was willing to take, from my recollection, $1,800 to $2,000 to investigate a, you know, work from the village, work that they screwed up.
To evaluate it, yeah.
Did the engineer see it after it was opened up?
Kevin was here, yes.
And James.
And James.
Do you know what their view was after it was open?
We have the pictures of, you know, things being opened up and what they found, all the debris in their old sidewalk, boulders, timbers, whatever.
And I'll just tell you, I have no idea. I mean, you're just, you're of the view that the engineer made a mistake, the contractor made a mistake. I have no idea if they did anything wrong or not. And I don't know, it's not my area, I'm not as, so.
Well, you know, originally, there was a step there prior to, you know, the sidewalk being raised. And if the sidewalk wouldn't have been raised, we wouldn't be sitting here right now.
But that step was removed at the request of the downtown property owners.
I don't recall any authorization.
Wasn't it, Mike? Did they want that gone?
Well, we had, yeah, we had a number of businesses, some businesses, were complaining because they had elderly customers, that that step was a hazard to them. We had put railings along there, if you recall, handrails, over the course of the years to help mitigate that. But at the end of the day, for example, Burgy, they have a number of older customers, and they preferred that to be gone, yes.
It's too bad, because I think it tracks from the historic nature of all those buildings. You know, I mean, you go in other communities and you see, you know, the steps go up. I understand, you know, modern times and so forth, but it's too bad, because it was never meant to be.
The steps themselves were put in with about 92, 1992. But that was flat, basically, there was a step that, of course, prior to that, but it wasn't a six or eight inch step.
So back to the, the steps are gone, that's not going to change.
I know.
I was going to say that one.
I know.
Kind of back to the issue we have, and to me, it goes back to what I read a bit ago, there's not conclusive evidence, all you can do is speculate. And again, it seems to me like we need to be talking engineer, the contractor, insurance company, see where that goes. There's not a huge rush here, right? I mean, we want to stay on top of it, but hopefully Xander would understand that this didn't come back to us. So it does take some discussion, it's a, as Matt has said, to me, it's a complex issue, I agree with that.
Do you have any thoughts, Mike, about talking to contractor and the engineer?
Well, the only thing I would say is that, I think, you know, if we're going to do that, Mark should do that, we should not involve Matt, because we'll just spend more money, and no offense to Matt here.
More money than you.
Yeah, I mean, so either we're going to do it, I mean, if it ends up being a legal thing, then that doesn't make any sense at all. So I would just say, Mark, we'd reach out to, you know, to the engineer and contractor. Or, or we could do is first, I guess my suggestion would be to talk to our insurance company.
Yeah.
That's what I would do first.
And they have insurance companies too.
They may, they may end up reaching out to the contractor and, I don't know, behalf, so that'd be my first step if we're going to do, we're going to pursue.
And they probably will talk to contractor and engineer, which would be a logical way for that to go with, ask it about it.
Yep.
See, heads nodding?
I can live with that.
Okay.
I know what we'll get if we don't ask.
Yeah, nothing.
It's nothing.
So can you live with that for the time being?
Yeah.
We'll get on that.
And are we going to ask for both, for both invoices, the 1162, to re-weld the threshold?
Yes, we'll submit both of them.
Yeah, okay.
We'll submit all the documentation.
Okay. Good.
Okay, so I think that's where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item four, Village Attorney and Administrative Report. Item A, Status of Possible Tiff Two Assistance for Berhals for Business Park Project, and that project has stopped.
Marty's pulled it, yes.
So that's done. So go to item B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Progress Addition to Alpine Meadows Development Agreement.
And this can now be approved. I asked that you table it at your last meeting so that we could verify that we have the easements and covenants in place that we need to deal with private streets, and we've determined that we do. So my recommendation is that you approve the agreement. With, oh, and the change, right now, it refers to Jerry Loopke as the developer, we need to change that to Forward Oregon LLC.
I'll move that with the change that Matt indicated. What was the name of that?
Forward Oregon.
Forward Oregon.
LLC.
That change.
I'll second.
Sorry, that's a good chuckle.
Trying to make me laugh.
Okay, so, any questions or comments on this? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Dregny's advice to approve the progress addition to Alpine Meadows Development Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Agreement for Land Division Improvements in the Bergamont Development, this is Bergamont Townhomes Agreement. Matt?
Yes, so where we are with this is, the agreement is complete, we're still doing a little work on the park fee issue.
Correct.
And so my recommendation is that, and the park fee issue is this, we, as you all know, this development is one that dates back to agreements that were entered into years ago.
2001.
Yeah, and we had a, we had a framework in place for dealing with park fees at the outset. We're just needing to do some calculations to determine whether or not there needs to be any adjustment in the fees that they're paying based on the change in zoning from commercial to residential for these townhome units. Once we do the math, we'll be able to determine whether there needs to be any adjustment in park fees or not. So my recommendation is to approve the agreement, subject to allowing staff to make a final determination about whether any change needs to be made with respect to park fees.
Excuse me, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So Mr. Dregny has made the suggestion to approve the agreement pending finalizing park fees. Now we've got most a second, so a discussion or questions on that?
Is it a question of a change in the fee structure?
No, here's the, and here's the issue. So when the original agreement was approved, when the original agreement was approved, the developer dedicated a certain amount of land, 6.2 acres, I think, and paid like $600 and some thousand dollars in park fees to the village. And that was, those payments were deemed and agreed to as adequate to pay for the park fees and provide the land needed to serve, I believe it was 858 units, residential units within the whole development. What we're trying to do now is to determine whether they're still operating within that 858 total residential dwelling units. And the reason that there may, we need to look at that is, they've changed the zoning, we, the village approved a change in the zoning for some commercial areas to residential, which has affected the number of dwelling units that would be allowable. And there have been other changes made in terms of the development over time that has affected the density and the, you know, of residential units. So what we want to do is say, are we still operating within that 858 total residential units? Or are we, are we now exceeding that? And if we're exceeding the 858, at least as of today, my, my view is, if we're exceeding the 858, they need to pay an extra $750 per unit, for units in excess of 858. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? So we have motion second to approve the land division improvements for Bergamont Development pending finalizing park fees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dregny.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, good evening.
Thank you.
You're done, right?
Matt's done.
Yep, here at least.
Got more to do.
Okay, so item five is approval of minutes. We have minutes from September 8th, 2014 for approval.
Who's to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, Approval of Vouchers. We had a new number at our place when we came tonight, which is $605,165.96.
I'll make a motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Thank you. So are there questions or comments on vouchers?
That would be my discussion. I have a question for Mark. Bartelt Enterprises Asphalt Repair, where, what is that?
Where we have broken our mains.
Oh, okay. It just didn't, all of the, it didn't, the explanation wasn't there. Then we had a voucher from Diamond Vogel Paints for traffic paint, and I just, that reminded me to commend your department for the nice job they did on the crosswalks.
Yes.
Should have probably made that on board comments, but when I saw it on the vouchers, I just wanted to thank you and your staff, that looks great.
I agree with that.
Yeah?
Very sharp.
Gerber Leisure Parks Wood Fiber, is that underneath the equipment?
That's the wood chips. Comes out of 400 account.
All right. The 2015 International Tandem Axle, is that the new snowplow?
That's when you approved the last paperwork.
Oh, okay, all right. Is that, that came in under budget?
Truck is here, it's up at Burke Truck getting the snowplow package put on.
You happy with it?
It's in the Madison area. We haven't driven it yet.
Oh, you haven't. We just paid for it.
He hasn't seen it yet either.
The truck chassis, we haven't paid for the snowplow package.
Okay. Did we lose an AC unit that SCF had to fix? An air conditioning unit?
Oh, at the, at the PD.
That was a PD unit?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just replacing, fixing the old one?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I think it was actually, I think Chief Burke actually and Rudy caught it with smoking.
Ooh, okay. Wow, how much does a new one cost?
They're expensive, for commercial buildings.
Sixty-one for parts, yeah.
I think we spent just $10,000 or $12,000 on the one here, for just one unit, we've got three up on top of this building.
Okay, and what truck is truck number eight that we just had repaired at Willie's?
That would be a service truck, patrol truck. We had to, we have been farming out some of those repairs.
Right.
Our mechanic is on FMLA.
Okay.
Typically, we'd fix that in-house, but we had to get it fixed. That would be one of the flat beds that we use for chipping brush and pick-up leaves and stuff like that.
So is it, I mean, I assume you made the judgment call that it's worth 16 grand?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Any more questions for Mark?
Thanks, Steve.
That's every question.
Keep poking them.
Any other questions?
Well, you just haven't been here in a while.
Been up for the summer, right?
Yeah, that was my whole summer.
So you won't get any for quite a while no more, from Mr. Bollig at least.
Right, right.
I'll make sure he doesn't. Okay, so we have vouchers tonight in the amount of $605,165.96 for approval. We have a motion second, so roll call, please.
Bollig?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Bret Hauer?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes, thank you, that motion carries. Item seven is community input. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board this evening?
Nope.
Nobody in that big crowd out there? So we'll go to item eight, Proclamations and Announcements, Board Comments. Mr. Bollig made one already on the board.
Yeah, out of order, again.
Get that right next meeting.
I got one question, Mike. I'm just wondering if you could put on the agenda for either the next board meeting or two board meetings out, but relatively soon, just to kind of give us an update on what's going on with the hotel in town? Just because I've got some questions I'd like to ask, and I know I can't talk about it unless it's on the agenda.
Okay. So. Okay, and maybe by then, we'll have better information.
Yeah, or something. Yeah, I guess I don't care if it's next, in two weeks or four weeks, but I know we just need to start thinking about if we're going to be serious about it, because once Pittsburgh does something out there on Daisy Road, we could forget it probably.
Yeah, I will.
So I just want to ask a few questions.
Sure, absolutely.
I have a comment. Cal at Express Automotive Motive, all the cars that should be parked over at the printing place have been parked on Borough Street on both sides, and it's been really kind of a mess. If Trucky comes through with any of their big buildings, it's really hard to get through there. But I just talked to Cal just before I came, but he said now the parking lot should be finished now over at the printing place. But they were told, they contacted the Catholic Church, the one small parking lot, and they could park there, but nobody hardly did. And it would have been a kind gesture for another business place to help out another business place. Just my comment.
Anything else? We'll go to staff comments. Peggy, voter ID information?
So you may have seen the little pamphlet at your seat, photo ID, the photo ID requirement established as part of the Act 23 in 2011 is in effect for the November 2014 general election. We do have this information on our website. We have also handed out pamphlets to the library and senior center. I don't know if you guys have any questions.
I got one for you. You know, I've heard on the TV when they're discussing this, that there's going to be a lot more expense for the individual clerks. Are you, do you foresee any more expense? I mean, I'm thinking like, what kind of expense could there be? I don't know. I just was curious what your thoughts are on that.
That's a great question.
I think they were referring to was if communities already mailed out the ballots.
We hadn't mailed out our ballots, so.
Yeah, I think that's what they were referring to.
We had to be in contact with everyone, and when we did our ballots, we did insert information in with the ballot, so.
Okay, so hopefully, they'll take care of it the way they should, and we won't have any additional expense.
Yeah, we shouldn't, that way anyway.
I think there's staff time to add.
Right.
It's a lot of information to catch up on.
Okay, yeah. All right.
And item two is, we are requesting applications from village residents to serve on the Oregon Fire EMS Joint Board. This is our Fire District Personnel Committee, and we would like applicants with human resources experience, please.
If possible.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Or just interrushing people. If you're interested, you can contact Mr. Grace, and he will get you appropriate materials to fill out.
Yes.
Item nine, Communication, Missland's Business. Item A, Status of Bike Trail Construction?
I'm going to let Mark give you an update.
Okay.
The, the stretch along Cusick Parkway is basically to rough grade now. They are working, they're out in the field of DOC property now, and they're moving right along. They should, if everything goes as well as it did today a couple of weeks, then we should be in really good shape. As a matter of waiting for the contractor, the asphalt contractor to get there and do his work, and it's moving.
So they're on site and getting things done now?
Right.
Because that was a problem for a while.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any questions? Okay. Item B is an FYI, Notice of School of Medicine and Public Health Survey of the Health of Wisconsin. They will have folks in Oregon.
Talking to people, right?
Correct. We're going to, we're going to post, post, right? Post, right?
I can post it on the posting board.
Yeah, then we're gonna put it on the webpage, too.
Okay. Okay. Then another FYI, Thursday, October ninth, in the middle school cafeteria from five to seven PM. There'll be a public involvement meeting for U.S. Highway fourteen project, informational meeting. Anything else on that, sir?
No.
Okay. And then item D, discussion of possible action regarding two thousand fourteen-fifteen intergovernmental agreement for operation of an impaired driving task force.
The board approved this... This is the second time we're doing this. This is through a grant.
Yeah.
And Chief Burke's gonna talk about this in more detail at the Personnel and Public Safety meeting next week, Monday, but they're busy running the same program they ran last year. I think the only thing he mentioned to me was, I think, I think this year, he said if you would have driven into Oregon the night that we had, that we had... There were fifteen squads parked on Main Street. So they're gonna break it up into two evenings this year, or next year, excuse me. But he'll talk in more detail at the staff.
And that agreement's in our packet of people who wish to review it. It gives all the communities that are involved.
Yeah, the only difference is that we changed the date, and some of the signatures are changed in this. Otherwise, the agreement's exactly the same.
Okay.
So one question, is it a one-year renewable agreement? Is that correct?
I think it's, as long as the grant exists, they're gonna keep doing it.
Anything else on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item ten, reported committees.
But they invoked.
Oops, I'm sorry.
There was no motion.
Oh, there's no motion.
See, we're gonna get done fast tonight. So we would need a motion second on that task force, please. Sorry.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item ten, reported committees. Jeannie, Planning Commission meeting from nine eleven fourteen.
So the item on our agenda is possible action regarding approving Resolution fourteen fourteen relating to an application for a condition use permit for one fifty-five Braun Road. And there's quite a bit of information on this in our packets. I can tell you at the Planning Commission, we had a presentation by the owner of the Braun Road facility. We had a public hearing, and there was no one to speak in favor or against it, so we closed the public hearing. And what they want... What he wants to do is basically restore that facility to its original use of basically being indoor sports area. So he has... So the proposed operational use of structure of the site is indoor commercial entertainment, soccer, racquetball, basketball, dance studio, karate, gymnastics, handball, fitness center, exercise center. We asked about the indoor commercial entertainment, if that included dances. He said no. They will not be requesting any sort of liquor license, and he is currently working with a realtor to have basically one or two different, it sounds like soccer or athletic groups come in to lease that facility. So he is very interested in getting this facility back to its original purpose, and we just... We thought it seemed like a good idea. So the Planning Commission voted to approve the conditional use permit, and then now it's here before the whole board tonight.
So that comes as a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's like a step in the right direction. Big step in the right direction.
Sounds good, yeah.
And CUP's pretty tight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The conditional use permit is pretty tight as far as anything changing, so we won't go through what we went through once before.
No.
Any questions or comments? So we have a motion, a second, for Resolution number fourteen days fourteen for an application for a conditional use permit for one fifty-five Braun Road. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, Finance Building and Facilities Committee meeting from nine fifteen fourteen. Mr. Bollig?
Thank you. The first two items are discussion items, actually informational items. The first one has to do with the... An offer from Jeff McCarthy from Alliant Energy to install an electric vehicle charging station for the village at a site of our choice. The cost would be thirty-five thousand dollars, so at that cost, the staff recommended that we not pursue installation at this time because as we go forward, prices will probably go down, and we'll have more cars in the village that are in need of it at that time. Second informational item is the Chamber of Commerce. Actually, this is an action.
Yeah, that's actually a motion.
This is an action.
Judy's getting real nervous back there, Jerry.
Yeah, it's not really...
No, she's not listening, so.
I'm always listening.
So I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the new Chamber of Commerce lease agreement for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and two thousand seventeen. And the... There really were no changes in the verbiage, and I think the rent stayed the same.
I'll second that. Peggy's looking for a second.
Yeah. In other words, let's move on.
No, no. She's like, oh, no, we can't keep talking unless someone says a second. Keep talking.
Let's move on.
Oh.
I'm done.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, to approve the chamber lease for fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm sorry, Doug, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, okay. Item three, please.
I'd like to make a motion to have the K-9 fund purchase Squad Two Twelve from the village in the amount of ten thousand dollars to replace the current K-9 fund vehicle, Squad Two Hundred, due to the excessive maintenance costs of Squad Two Hundred. Squad Two Hundred will be sent to state auction.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, that motion's pretty self-explanatory. We've got a vehicle that is low... That we're gonna... We had a new vehicle. We're gonna get rid of Squad Two Twelve, but the K-9 program has a use for it because they're... And it would actually be a positive for the village because the maintenance costs on the current vehicle are too high.
Did you want to include anything in there? I know it was discussed at finance about when the squad is sold, that the money that is... That is purchased, that vehicle is sold for, then gets... Goes back to the K-9 fund?
I can include that. Matter of fact, let the minutes show that the sale proceeds will go back to the K-9 fund. Okay, let's do this without glasses because they are...
Oh.
This is exploding.
Off the cameras over there.
Luckily, I can make the print...
Cheap glasses.
I can make the print bigger. But now I can only read one word at a time.
He's gonna have no questions the rest of the night.
You want my glasses?
You don't know what's going on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen Town of Oregon.
Wait, wait. You're going too fast. We gotta vote on the other one first.
Okay.
You're acting like I do now.
No, because I think Eric added the comment about the...
Yeah.
When you're going back to the K-9 fund.
Okay, we have a motion, second, about the K-9 fund vehicles and with the money going back to K-9 fund that car is sold. So any further discussion on that item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four?
Okay, now I would like to make a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen Town of Oregon Police Agreement.
Second.
Thank you.
This is the agreement that allows the Oregon Police Department to patrol in the Town of Oregon as per their request. And the rate is... I believe the rate, as I recall...
Is sixty dollars and fifty...
Sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents, and that represents cost plus benefits plus fee, equipment charge.
But it includes... It's the year sub and salary. It's an overtime rate for a police officer. That's what it's based on.
So we have motion, second, to approve the two thousand fifteen Town of Oregon Police Agreement. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, please, Jerry.
And my last motion, will be applause, is I'd like to make a motion to allocate the costs of the former DiMaggio, sale of the DiMaggio property as per the attached spreadsheet in our packet. And basically, after the down payment and the house...
Jeannie, Jeannie, second.
Yeah, we need a second, Jerry.
Jeannie, second. Sorry to be...
Thank you.
Trying to be somewhat procedural here.
Yeah.
Jerry, can I just say two things before you start?
Right ahead.
So I do want to point out that in the motion, the motion that's coming from Finance, it didn't include the referral to the Park Board, but then when I... After I thought about it, I thought it really should go to the Park Board for discussion. So if it's coming from Finance, the board, the board's gonna refer to the Park Board if this motion passes. And then if they have any questions, we can talk about it in more detail when we get together in October. So Doug, this will be... The board approves this will be on your report next Wednesday.
Okay. So hang on to the spreadsheet.
And then... And the second thing is at the Finance Committee meeting, I talked about using thirty thousand dollars from the developer storm quarter fund. And then when Lisa and I looked at that the following day, we thought it was... It would be more appropriate to use twenty. So we're saying twenty thousand dollars out of that fund over a five-year period. That's all I have.
I guess I have no further comments then because Mike led the discussion on that one.
Any questions? So our approval sends us on back to the Park Board.
It's not bad. It's just...
Oh, yeah.
It's a referral.
It's a communication.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah.
Item C is a Park Board meeting from September fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, there's three items on the agenda for that... For the Parks Board. First one regard... Is in regard to a public spirited citizen, Joe Sispec, I think it's pronounced. I apologize if I mispronounce it, who has offered some funds toward the construction of a sand volleyball court in High Meadows Park. So the motion is to recommend to forward to the Village Board to review the preliminary concept of the sand volleyball court in High Meadow Park contingent on neighborhood feedback and cost estimates that would be provided by Mr. Sispec.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Will it also include a suggested location?
Yes. He described it verbally but did not provide any diagram or sketch. So he was gonna do some research and come back to the next Parks Board meeting with some more detailed information to answer those... Answer that particular question.
If the neighbors support this, then I think... I think we'll ask... I'll ask Mark to weigh in, and I'll probably weigh in on this, but I withhold our opinion into the neighbor's speak on this.
So where is High Meadow Park?
It's off of Ames Street. Behind... Actually, behind Yuri's house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right behind.
Is there anything expected about that location, or is...
It's close to where Mr. Sispec lives, and he sees it as an underutilized park...
Yeah.
Parklet.
During the school year, it's a high-use soccer field. I know they go till dark in the spring and during the school year.
It's really busy back there.
Yeah. And... But other... You know, in the summertime, no.
To answer that question, I believe he stated that the sand volleyball lot would not interfere with the soccer. It would not be...
Right, that would be a concern.
Yeah.
That would be upsetting to, I believe, the school soccer program.
The reason I ask that is the Methodist Church has a sand volleyball court right now. It's fully constructed. It's got sand there. It's got the net. It's got the stand. It's got everything there, and it never gets used.
Right.
It turns into weeds, and now we till it up. So I don't know if that would suffice or not. I mean, we love to have it get used, and that would save all the cost of building this one as well as taking care of it.
Aye.
So I think that maybe the Park Board could talk about that, too, is if that would... I know it's not close to where he lives. Maybe that's a big... Will be the big problem, but there is one available in the community that's all set to go at no cost if people want to use it.
I'll make a note of that and bring it up at the meeting.
Yeah, I think it's worth talking about. Because the church would like to have that used because it gets used, and plus it might keep the weeds out. We would have to take care of it.
Just make a note also that there is a sand volleyball court in Windcrest Park, which is about three blocks to the west between Winward and Leeward Way.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion, second, to talk about this sand volleyball court in High Meadow Park contingent on neighborhood feedback and cost estimates provided by Mr. Sispec.
So what exactly are we doing with this motion? I can't figure it.
I'm trying to think that, too, as I read through this.
I think you're... I think the Park Board is just saying as a conceptual idea, you like... You think it's worthwhile. Because the board said no, then the Park Board would probably tell... Probably tell the neighbors, don't even, you know, don't even think about it. Because it, you know... They're actually doing the smart thing versus doing all the work.
Okay.
Bring it to the Village Board, and the board goes, well, we don't want that.
Yeah.
Actually, this is...
So do we... Excuse me, do we want to vote on the concept?
All you're doing is... All you're saying is to the Park Board is, keep working on it.
Okay.
That's all you're saying to them.
All right.
And with some other options to check out, which Doug has made note of.
It's based on, and they, they're doing it, they're gonna have neighborhood feedback, cost estimates, and so...
And Doug, you'll let them know, I'm sure they knows, but that there's a sand volleyball court in a nearby park, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I made, I made notes.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the second item is in regard to naming the new bike trail. The Park Board thought that it would be important to honor and recognize the Rotary Club for its contribution to the construction of the trail. So the name that they came up with was this Oregon Rotary Bike Trail. If somebody has a better idea, they would be glad to consider it instead of that simple name. So the idea is name the trail in recognition of the Rotary Club in some fashion.
So we need a second, please?
I'll second for discussion.
So let's discuss.
Okay, everybody else now who would come up with a large amount of money, so now what would happen?
There are other ways to acknowledge that. We could do sections of the trail. This section, thank you to whomever it might be.
I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be sure that somebody did...
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I'm glad you asked that. There's, there's lots of ways to acknowledge other contributions that we might get. I'm thinking if there's gonna be a large contribution like this, they would have come forward already. So they're on the ground floor and they have it, but we're hoping for more contributions.
And I wasn't saying that, and I didn't think it should be named after the Rotary, but I just thought if somebody else came up with some money...
That was a good question.
Right. What was the contribution? I don't remember.
Ten thousand dollars. Could be up to twenty thousand, right, Judy?
Yes.
If they sell a lot of brats, yeah. That's kind of where that goes from.
And I just want to say that I am a member of the Rotary Club, but I'm not an officer, and I don't have any monetary interest in this, so I'm pretty sure I can vote.
Yeah.
But I just want to let you know, I am a Rotary member.
Okay, thank you.
Which I think is a good thing.
And a cheeseburger.
Any further discussion? So from the Park Board, we have a motion second to name the new bike trail, the Oregon Rotary Bike Trail. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, please.
Okay, the last item was brought to the Park Board by Amy Miller of the Oregon Community Education Department. Funds would be made available, or will be available for setting up a frisbee golf course in one of the parks, and the discussion centered on J.C. Park West. So I guess the golf installations can be moved so they don't interfere with other sports installations, because that's the idea. Be another way to enhance recreation within the park system.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a question. So explain, so it's a portable frisbee golf course? Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe that's correct.
Amy is here. If you want to come up and just tell us, Amy.
What's the address I'm supposed to make? So I'm Amy Miller. Do I do my address the whole?
You can if you'd like.
Okay, 124 Harvest Circle, Oregon. I am the Community Education Direct, Community Education and Recreation Director for the Oregon School District. So one of the things we're trying to do is add activities for families, community members. So the way we can do this, we believe, and again, we're in a conceptual stage here, would be to mount the standards, but have the top removable. So even winter, other times, we could take it out depending on, we would want to have somebody come in and help us to design it. As you're looking at the park, we don't want to interfere with soccer, we don't want to interfere with walkers. We want to make sure that it's safe, walkers and runners.
So you take the baskets up and down?
You can. In some cases, they have permanent, and then they have where you can remove the top, stand, and basket.
Yeah, I know this is very, very popular in some Madison parks.
And that's why we can keep people here.
I just have one comment. I know that they have made a plan for the West Park, and for the ball dimes, and that, I just want to make sure that if this gets put in, so that, like you said, it can be changed, and that would be very important.
And just to keep in mind that people are always walking, and we want to make sure that the path, the players would be, would be a different path around. It could be a perimeter, so that it's a little bit safer, but we would bring in some experts to help us design.
And who would pay for this?
Our department, so the Community Ed and Rec.
I see they're working like crazy over there.
Okay, so further questions or discussion? We have a motion second to forward to review the preliminary concept of adding a frisbee golf course in J.C. Park West. So again, it's preliminary concept, so Amy gets the nod to go ahead and continue, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks. You can head to your other obligation. Okay, item 11 is, minutes not requiring action. These are in our packet for those who are viewing, Cable TV Committee, July 22nd, 2014, and Library Board, August 13th, and the Director's Report, August 2014. Did you have any comments, Susan, or...
No, it's just been a very busy summer, a very successful summer, and our new fabulous statue is in. If people want to come by and take a look at that, it's been quite wonderful, so...
Okay, good. We appreciate the continued activity at the library. It's a good spot. Item 12 is unfinished business, of which there's none. Item 13 is new business, of which there's none. Item 14 is future agenda items. The main thing to note there is the dates of budget meetings, so we're present for those. And item 15 is a motion for adjournment.
Could I ask Mike a question?
Nope. You're over your quota.
He doesn't have to answer.
He's already journeying, so I can't answer that.
I just realized that I'm gonna be on vacation on the 22nd. So, and again, I'm not asking anybody to change anything, but I would like to be present for certain key departments, and I think you know which ones I mean.
I think, I think that, I'm working on the agendas, and we're gonna talk about this tomorrow at the Department meeting, but I think I have the Senior Center and the Library, I think, on that evening, I believe. So, off the top of my head, I...
I have no problem not going to those, but if you want to reschedule it or the rest of the board...
Well, I, I think there was an issue with some other board member about why we couldn't have it on the 27th. I don't remember. I, it's typically we have when we try to break them up one, one by, one per week, and I forgot somebody. I thought somebody else had a conflict, which is why we...
I'll be, again, I'll be gone.
Yeah, so...
Maybe it was Jeff.
Could it be Jeff? Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm here.
Sorry. But 13th and 20th have worked.
Okay.
So we know the 22nd will be a shorter meeting. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Some of them.
All in favor? Opposed?
They ought to be wonderful.
That is a very good point, Steve. That is an excellent...